Good evening, everybody. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I hope everyone had an enjoyable Veterans Day yesterday. Of course, that's why we're on Wednesday. Quick reminder for those who want to address the board during the non-agenda section of the agenda. If there are slips out there, if you don't have one and want to fill that out just so we know to call your name, that would be great because we'll be coming up on that here relatively shortly. We'll start with the calling of the role. Callie.
Cheryl Armstrong, Carol Jeffreyston,
Yes.
Dave Irf,
Here.
John Hedges,
Here.
Ashley Overton,
Here.
Jacob O'Callaghan,
Here.
And Dale Ryer.
Here. And Mrs. Overton, let's kindly remind me to please, if you have cell phones, if you would please put them on silent or turn them off during the course of the meeting. Item one, I'm sure we just did that. Item two, reception of visitors. 2.1A, recognition of the Mattoon Middle School Fall Athletics activities. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It has been an exciting fall of the middle school. We have lots of students to play like tonight, so I have Gunner Bernal and Aiden Heinz, and they were both state qualifiers for cross country. Gunner was able to, he was 97, out of 223 runners in 3A, and Aiden was 135th out of 223. So, an exceptional year for these young guys, and they are planning on going to high school next year and also running across country. And then I would also like to recognize Madison Frank. She's not with us tonight, but she was able to qualify for state in girls golf. And the unique thing about Madison is this will be her third year of qualifying. She qualified in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And yeah, that's amazing, and she's also planning on continuing her golf career at high school next year. And then I would like to introduce our band director, Ms. Zavallen, and she's got a great group of kids with her tonight. She's going to be talking about the students that have fallen fried for ILMEA for band and choir.
We have a lot, so they're going to try to squeeze in here.
Just put them in front of the board. Seriously, no one has to see us.
All right, so I am reading off the names for both the choir and the band students. Mrs. Kinkley couldn't be here today, so I'm reading those names for choir. In attendance, we have Charlie Compton, who's singing soprano, Bren Kinkley, alto, and Lennon White, tenor. We also have Riley Nelson, a soprano, Harper Hill, a soprano, Abel Allen, a tenor, and Maddie Pugh for vocal jazz. In attendance for band, we have Landon Brown for jazz trombone, Edie Schaefer for flute, Zoe Konar flute, Kennedy Spraker flute, Maddie Pugh alto saxophone, Sam Hutton clarinet, Addie Heaton bass clarinet, and Addison Perkins percussion. They all had to audition by creating a video, submitting their audition. They got chosen from various judges throughout the state. Landon and Maddie participated on November 3rd at Millikan University, the Isle of Man Jazz Festival. And the rest of the students will be participating at EIU on November 22nd, and they will have a concert. You're all welcome to attend. And then we have our winter concert, December 9th at MMS at 6:30 PM, if you'd like to attend that too.
Hey, item 2.1B, lift students for the coffee bean challenge. Just come around. Bringing them in.
All right, so we were invited by Mr. Conner to talk about the book The Coffee Bean by John Gordon and Damon West. The key reason for that is that Damon West is going to be a keynote speaker at the joint annual conference that many of our board members will be attending later in November. So, to present, I have with me Savannah Nuka, comer from Kansas, and Noah Hardwick from Charleston, and yes, he does have a Trojan shirt on. That is really the heart of what an hairy person is, bringing us all together, so.
This has to be a first. You're welcome, Noah. Welcome to Mattoon. He's at Charleston High School, bragging.
Okay, please bear with me. I have a headache, and he told me that this meeting is tomorrow. I had the day long. Yeah, I'm a little ill prepared, but I'm still gonna go with it. What happens when you put a carrot in boiling water? That's a rhetorical question, or you can answer it. I don't care. He can answer it. Okay, it's fine. We don't have these smart things. It gets soft. So, when life becomes difficult, or when water starts to boil, the carrot weakens and loses its strength. Like the carrot, people react to pressure in their environment. It represents people who let stress, negativity, or hardship break them down. The carrot allows the world to change who they are. And in the Coffee Bean book, which is right there, there's a quote that says, "Yes, the carrot was softened and weakened by its environment. It was impacted by the conditions it was in."
What happens when you put negative water in boiling water? It gets hard. It lets the environment turn harder. People like me are hardened by an environment. People who let the stress of life turn them hard, which can affect themselves and others. I also have a quote from it. They become mean, angry, negative, and sometimes numb because of the difficult environment they are in.
All right, start of the show. What happens when you put a coffee bean in boiling water? The coffee bean reacts to the same boiling water as the kidney egg, but it acts completely differently. Instead of being changed by the environment, like the carrot softening or the egg getting hard, it actually changes environment. It represents people who use their energy, kindness, and mindset to bring positive change, no matter how negative things seem. The coffee bean shows that true strength comes from within. So, I have a coffee bean card here. I don't know if you guys have that or not, but we fill these out throughout the week, and at the end of the week, we do a thing which he's going to talk about. And at the top is the recipient, so someone who changed the water like the coffee bean. And then date, that's boring, how they changed the water, so how did they impact their environment? And then who is notified?
So, every week on Friday, each floor gets a chance to host their coffee bean. Each week it's a different floor, and we do an activity where we draw. So, the people on the activity, we draw from those cards, and a handful of people from the cards get the opportunity to, we do like games, and it just kind of way to appreciate those people who are making a difference.
Some pictures there we got. They were playing a homerun derby one week, a baby food eating contest. That was a really exciting one for our students. And then, and just the question, would you rather be a carrot, the egg, or the coffee bean? And then we have books.
I have a question. Is it, how many students are doing this? Are you seeing a lot of people participating by nominating people and writing down things?
Well, as someone who's in the coffee bean committee, I feel like there is a lot of participation, but maybe not for the reasons you think. I feel like a lot of people like to write people's names down because whenever someone gets their name pulled out, they participate in the game. So, there's a lot of people who are nominating their friends because they know they don't want to play, but I do see a lot of people, especially in Colored Area, who participate this in a genuine way.
That's awesome.
I think a lot of times, even when they're being honorary about it, what the message they're writing down really is true. Like, a lot of my scene when they do that is, they helped me with an assignment, which they really did. And although they're not really, you know, they're doing it kind of out of that oneriness, they're also still recognizing they're doing something to help.
Well, that's how we interact with friends.
Yep.
Whatever gets them to participate.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions?
Appreciate the connection that you're making as the board has an opportunity here to take away, you know, what you guys have shared and what's happening across our district, but also make that connection when they get an opportunity to go and get some professional development as a board. So, appreciate you both coming and sharing, and I think that you've hopefully been the coffee bean for some of us here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to item three on the agenda. That is the consent agenda. It does require board action. These are the items on the consent agenda. Item 3.1, approval of amendments from the regular board meeting of October 14th, 2025, and the executive session meeting of the same date. Under item 3.2, financial payment of bills that includes the presentation of the bills for approval of the monthly financial reports by fund, the year-to-date budget report. Item 3.3, the monthly enrollment report. Item 3.4, approval of the Title I parent involvement policy. Item 3.5, approval of the Mattoon High School overnight trips as follows. The MHS wrestling team to attend the Dale Breckel Mascota End by December 19th and 20th of 2025 in Mascuta. Item 3.6, approval to submit private, state, and federal grants for the 2026-27 school year. Item 3.7, approval of school improvement plans presented October 14th, 2025. Item 3.8, approval of the standard operating procedures presented, also on October 14th, 2025. The highlight of the list, item 3.9, to appoint Dave Irf as the board delegate to the 2025 IA SB Delegate Assembly. And item 3.10, approval of the Freedom of Information Report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Cheryl Armstrong. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by John Hedges. Any discussion on the board?
Congratulations, Dave.
Arngerson,
Yes.
Irf,
Yes.
Hedges,
Yes.
Overton,
Yes.
O'Callaghan,
Yes.
Armstrong,
Yes.
Ryer.
Yes. Next item on the agenda for item four, reports and recommendations of the business manager, Mr. Gier.
Can I miss him? Callie? Want to present it?
Yeah.
Slide show to the right. We're going to get back to you.
Okay. 4.1, board action to approve the 2025 certificate of tax levy for Mattoon Middle School District Number Two. Attended property tax levies must be on display at a separate board meeting before being acted upon. We presented this information at the October 14th board meeting, and several questions answered those, went through several things about that. A reminder, our levy is the amount of money that the district asks for, then the county will do their thing, and
will do their thing, and then the extension is the amount of money that we will receive next year, and the district lays in dollars, not in tax rates. We don't create the tax rates, we just ask for the amount of dollars that we need for our next year, and then, again, the county does the tax rate side effects. The numbers that you see here are exactly the numbers that I presented to you last month, nothing has changed. The total levy, eighteen million, five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Remember, we are a tax cap district, so most we can ask for is five percent or CPI, whichever is lower, but that's the most we can get, we can ask for up to five percent, and we talked about last month doing that, two point nine percent is because of the CPI growth, that's what we're entitled to, and then we are going to the total ask for four point nine nine percent, which allows us to capture any new growth within the district. If we don't ask for the new growth, we don't get it, and we'll never get it. It's money that we've lost as a district. So that is the proposal, those are the numbers. Again, the Ed Fund is our biggest fund, so it has the largest amount there, and see the totals as we move down the sheet, the total of eighteen point five eighty-three million dollars. It's over.
Oops, sorry.
That's okay, so board action, so we recommend the approval of this tax levy.
Any questions for Mr. Gier from the board? Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty five certificate of tax levy for the school district?
Yes.
Motion by Jacob Uphaugh, second? Second by Ashley Overton, discussion on the board? Very well, Callie?
Erp?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Uphaugh?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Four point two, board action to approve a resolution abating the taxes, tip toward levy for the year twenty twenty five to pay debt service on the taxable general obligation for funding school bond, or ARBs, Series twenty twenty one for our district. Board issued revenue bonds in two thousand thirteen, we refinanced these in twenty twenty one, and when we did refinance these bonds, it saved the district four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the life of the bond, just because of some different rates that we were able to get. In order to maintain the pledge not to pass this on to property taxpayers, the board must direct the county clerk to abate the money of the property taxes for these bonds. The amount of the resolution for the abatement this year is three hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We will use our evidence-based funding money from the state to pay that ARB amount this year. So we have to abate this so that the county doesn't collect taxes on this amount of money. Like I said, it's because this was promised when we took out the bonds, we were having trouble that year in the budget crisis, even paying salaries, so that's where this comes from, we just need to do this every year to make sure the county clerk follows the demand or request of our community. We recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gier from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve a resolution to abate property taxes as presented? Motion by John Hedges, is there a second? Second by Jeff Branson, discussion on the board? Callie?
Hedges?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Uphaugh?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Erp?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Easy one for you. Item five on the agenda, reports and recommendations of the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. Scosse.
Thank you, four days before then, the November personnel report. We have item five point one A, certified resignations, we're recommending Jane Duckton is resigning as William Elementary School LDS One teacher effective immediately. Aaron Ramsey is resigning as Lit Technology Disseminating Catechetic Dean of twenty-five, twenty-six. Certified appointments, Delaney Farmer, we recommend substitute teacher effective immediately. Becky Gates, retired superintendent of the district, is a substitute teacher effective immediately. Tanya Niemeyer is a substitute teacher effective December one, twenty twenty five. Classified resignations, Dawn McGinnis will be retiring as the Administrative Service Center Grant Coordinator effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. At that time, she would have served twenty-six years as an administrative secretary here in the board office of Dawn, so Dawn's done a great job. Many of you know Dawn, she's been a great asset to our district here at Central Office, so we should retire her. Tanya Niemeyer is resigned as Williams Elementary School Parrot Pro effective November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty five. And then we have Sergeant Major Todd Stokes is retiring as JRTC instructor effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Major Stokes came here in oh-three, and at the end of his tenure, will have served, I believe, twenty-one years in that capacity, and that's after twenty years in active duty military, retiring, so he's done great service to our students and our community and our country, so thank him as well for his service. Continuing classified appointments, Valerie Dow is transportation service center bus driver effective immediately. Nick Jenta is Mattoon Middle School Second Ship Custodian effective immediately. Nicole Richards is rural elementary school supervisor effective immediately. Tamara Spore as Franklin Preschool Parrot Pro effective January twenty twenty six. Maggie Carroll is substitute parrot pro effective immediately. And then we have some volunteers, and no extra curriculum resignations or assignments on that document, so if you do have an addendum. So we'll clear it on the addendum, I have item five point one C, classified resignation, Sidney Plunkett is resigning as William Elementary School Supervisor effective immediately. Russell Scholes is resigning as Operations Service Center Maintenance Worker effective November first, twenty twenty five. Then we have some certain classified appointments, Jeanette Allison is William Elementary School twelve-month secretary effective immediately. Lani Karmasar, I won't even say this, Roba Raba, I said that like I was trying to practice that, a substitute school bus driver, effective immediately, was called in the lean house. Sidney Plunkett is substitute supervisor effective immediately. Joshua Wilson is a volunteer, and Sheena Wilson is a volunteer. And then lastly, a curriculum resignation, Kate Connor is a college freshman high school volleyball coach, effective immediately. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then I would recommend the personnel report as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? Motion by Dave Erp, second?
Second.
Second by Cheryl Armstrong, is there a discussion on the board? Seeing none, Paul?
Overton?
Yes.
Uphaugh?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Erp?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Scosse. Item six on the agenda, reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
Yes, first I'd like to start off just by sharing that annually, the state of Illinois has designated November fifteenth as school board members day. So just as an acknowledgement of our school board members, just wanna share that we appreciate your passion and energy and devotion to our students and to our staff here in Mattoon Community, in addition to the large paychecks that you receive from the district. You get the fifteenth off, because it's a Saturday this year. But in all seriousness, I mean, board members spend countless hours, you know, seeking feedback from the school community, listening to concerns, attending professional development, and offering support by attending events across the district to cheer on our students and staff, so please join me for thanking our seven board members and sharing the vision for our district, providing the extraordinary opportunities that they have given to those that they serve and advocating on behalf of all students. Thank you. Callie has some cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, if you would, stick around shortly after, we'd like to get a quick picture of our board soon with you, we appreciate that. Callie, did you say that we had to make the big cards so they could read them?
Yes.
Item six point two is also no action, but just wanna share that the board has been provided with a copy of the Illinois Association of School Boards Press, issue one twenty, which includes a part of a few pages of some updates following the legislative session. So we have presented that to the board, they have an electronic copy, are also willing to provide a print copy if needed, but that will sit for review for thirty days, and then we will come back at our December board meeting and seek board action to approve those before we would then approve those changes into our board policy moving forward. So again, no action, just want you to take an opportunity, if you have questions around that, feel free to reach out to Dave, Brian, Chad, and myself, and we'd be happy to look into that work. That's all I have. Can we keep rolling? Keep going, all right? Item six point three does include action, and this is the presentation and action to name the Assistant Superintendent beginning the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school year, and I'm proud to introduce to the board Dr. Morgan Wilhoit, will be our recommendation. A little bit about Morgan, she was born and raised on a family farm, strong work ethic and passion for lifelong learning. She has three kiddos, Millie age nine, Maisy age six, and Marshall age five, who keep her busy with their many sports and activities. In her free time, Morgan enjoys running, reading, researching, and writing. She is extremely excited to begin her journey here as the Assistant Superintendent. She earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education with a middle school endorsement from the University of Illinois, ran a champagne, followed by two master's degrees in curriculum and instruction and educational leadership from VIU, and a PhD in educational administration from Indiana State, and pre-completion of her Chief School Business Officials endorsement. Morgan doesn't sleep much. She has presented on school culture and school engagement, student engagement, in many different conferences, and she's also served on the Illinois State Board of Education advisory committees and boards to promote the assistoral education. Over the course of her time in education, she taught various grade levels, was the curriculum director, principal, and most recently, and currently serving as the superintendent of Shiloh School District. With each role, she has enjoyed connecting with students and staff, fostering meaningful relationships, and mentoring young learners to develop confidence and resilience through learning. I'm very pleased to recommend Dr. Morgan Wilhoit for the Assistant Superintendent position beginning July one, two thousand twenty-six.
Any questions from the board for the superintendent on the recommendation? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wilhoit, for being a candidate for the position, and thank you to our administration team. There is, from time to time, a debate that goes on, I would suggest, with all public institutions, with school boards or state governments or whatnot, about the decision-makers and the votes they are casting, and how down in the weeds they become in picking the people who are going to take certain positions in that institution, whatever it might be. And I was exceedingly thrilled with the process that the administration went through this year, not only cultivating outstanding candidate pools, but then helping walk the board members through what that candidate pool looked like, why the recommendation that was being made was being made, and for me, and I think I speak for at least some portion of the board, it made us feel like more informed decision-makers. And anytime you make someone a more informed decision-maker, you make them a stakeholder and a shareholder in that person's success, and we all feel that way about you. So my thanks to the administration, and I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the recommendation. I would invite comments from the rest of the board, or at least a second of my motion.
Absolutely, I wanna say very much thank you to the administration for the complete and thorough search, very professional, very professional, how that was presented to us as board members, really made us feel like that we were hiring the best person, the best folks for the position, so thank you.
Is there a second in the motion?
Yeah, is there?
Second, Dave Erp, second. No other comments? Callie?
Uphaugh?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Erp?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Morgan, would you like to introduce yourself or say anything?
Thank you guys so much, I'm really excited to be starting here next year, I've already been so welcomed by everyone, so I'm really excited to be working here next year with a larger community and be part of Mattoon.
Are you wanting to bring it on purpose?
I am.
Item six point four includes presentation of board actions to name the Arlen D. Williams Elementary School Principal beginning the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, and it is our pleasure to recommend Jared Kimbrough. Jared is a dedicated educator and coach for our district for more than two decades. He began his career, ironically, maybe not so ironically, in physical education at, wait for it, Williams Elementary School in two thousand four, and later served at Mattoon Middle School and Mattoon High School as a teacher, as well as AER instructor from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand twenty-one, he moved into the role of Dean of Students, also assumed the head football coach and head boys' track coach at MHS, where he monitors student behavior, applies appropriate discipline, provides support to students and staff. A little bit about Jared's academic and educational background, he's a graduate at VIU, where he earned a Bachelor of Science with a master, or with a major in physical education and a minor in health education, followed by a master's in education with a concentration in educational leadership. His leadership and coaching have been recognized through honors such as the Apollo Coaches Award in both two thousand sixteen and two thousand, or two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, and he's been part of the football staff that led Mattoon to an Apollo Conference Championship in two thousand thirteen. He views the opportunity to serve as the principal of Arlen D. Williams Elementary School as a significant, meaningful step in his service towards the students and staff in our district. Jared's leadership philosophy focuses on inspiring and empowering members of the school community, which includes students, teachers, staff, and families to reach their full potential and work towards a shared vision. He's deeply grateful for his family, for their support, to his players, past and present, for their effort and commitment, and to his colleagues throughout the district, all with whom he credits as helping him shape into the professional that he is today. It is my pleasure to recommend Jared Kimbrough as the next principal for Arlen D. Williams Elementary School.
Questions for the superintendent on the recommendation? If not, I am, but my comments that I made previously about the process that we went through are as true for this, as they were for Dr. Wilhoit's position, and they will be equally true for the third that we're going to do a little bit later. Like many people who've been around Mattoon and the Mattoon School for some time, I've known Mr. Kimbrough for some time, and I would say my most significant interaction with him was the four years that I was allowed to work for him as an assistant track coach to train his distance runners, and the, I can say many things about him and his coaching and what I saw on the track team, all of which would be compliments. The one that matters, though, is that he always found his way around to being centered on the kid. Particularly, I mean, I have some experience in track and field across country, and coaches can get jammed up in times and medals and sectional championships, and those are all great things, right? But Jared was always first and foremost concerned about the kids who put the uniform on, and how they were doing, not just how they were performing, but how they were doing, and that's always left an impression on me. So I am equally pleased, I will make a motion to approve the recommendation. Anyone else have any comments or?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second?
I, you and I started around the same time together, different areas, but one thing I've always liked about you, watching you from the sidelines, so to speak, you never let anyone outwork you, and you're always stepping up for an extracurricular or whatever when you're needed, and I see that, and I think you're gonna do great things, so congratulations.
I would just say, on what Dale said, I had the privilege of being that kid a few years ago, and Dale mentioned about Coach Kimbrough being centered around the kid, I had, you know, I was that kid for four years through high school, and I just wouldn't be able to echo enough everything that those two people have already said, and I wish him everything but the best for himself and his family in that building, and congratulations.
Callie, other comments from the board? John Hedges, second, so let's call him.
John Hedges second, so it's cool.
K. Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Earp?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Uphall?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Jared, would you like to share a few thoughts?
Sure. What's that? I just want to, first off, thank the Board, and everyone I've worked with over the years. Thank you for seeing me 20-plus years ago when I started. I don't know, hot-headed may be a word that you would use to describe me, passionate, that part hasn't changed, but I would have never seen myself moving to an elementary school where I'm going to help mold the lowest people that we have in, in the district. And that was really appealing to me as I moved from a position where I've been, you know, I've been in high school since 2008. So I love, I love that place, I am greenway through and through, but I am excited about the next step in my journey in helping out the, the folks at Arlen, at Arlen D. Williams for the next several years. So thank you very much, congratulations.
Item 6.5 is the presentation of board action to name the Lift Director beginning the 26-27 school year. This will likely come as little surprise to the Board, who we just witnessed Mr. Brown present or lead the presentation for, from our students regarding the coffee bean, but Chris Brown is our recommendation to serve as the next director at Lift. As many of you know, we've been fortunate to have an interim director, Todd Butler, fill in that role this year, and Chris has worked pretty closely with Mr. Butler over the course of the last five months in securing the success of Lift and casting that vision towards the future. Chris has served in, in our school district for 14 years as an industrial tech teacher at the high school, where he's also served as a lighthouse coordinator. He is currently the engineering and manufacturing, architecture, construction facilitator, and has served as the lit, the lead facilitator for this year. Over the course of his career, Chris has been deeply committed to student growth, innovation, community connection, and among his proudest accomplishments are receiving the 2025 ISBE Award of Excellence and contributing to the development of the Lift area Career Center, a project that expands hands-on learning and career readiness opportunities for students across our region. He holds an Associate, Associate of Applied Science in Computer-Aided Drafting and Design from John A. Logan, a dual Bachelor of Science degrees in Industrial Technology and Workforce Education and Development from SIU Carbondale, and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Eastern Illinois University. Chris is a people-first leader and believes that everyone has genius and strives to help others discover and use those strengths to elevate the entire team. Outside of school, you saw Chris's son tonight being honored for some band recognition. Chris enjoys his family life with his wife of 18 years, Kristen, their children, Landon in eighth grade, Lorelei in third over at Riddle, and together they volunteer annually for the One Stock Community Christmas. So I'm grateful to recommend Chris Brown as the next director of Lift for the 26-27 school year. Any questions for the Superintendent on the recommendation? Okay, I, a few words, I, it's not a secret to anyone who follows the Mattoon School Systems particularly for the last several years, that the Lift facility is a, it's a unique institution in that it's the only institution of, like a CTE facility, that, in which, which brings students in from other districts. That's a, that, that, that creates awesome opportunities for this district, but it shouldn't be a secret, that also creates challenges for the district as well, and this Board some time ago, and then the administration following up at the Board's decision, made that, made that decision, that we're going to make that extra effort for the kids who not only go to school here in Mattoon, who go to school in other districts, but want to avail themselves of the opportunities that the Lift facility provides. So it, that's, that's a, to be able, to be able to hand off leadership of such a special facility to someone who just received the Award of Excellence, and who has spent his teaching career in the CTE field, that's a special, special thing. It is hard to imagine that we could find someone better equipped to take on, take us on to chapter two of the Lift facility than Mr. Brown. So I'm very, very pleased to make a motion to support the recommendation of the Superintendent. I would fail if I did not also say a few words of thanks to Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler, when, when the past director left, and we kind of had to scramble to put some things together, Mr. Butler answered the call and helped us build a bridge from McLean Schaefer to Chris Brown, and we appreciate that. I want you to know that on behalf of all of Board members, we appreciate that very much, Mr. Butler. So with that, made the motion to support the recommendation of the Superintendent for Chris Brown. Is there a second?
Yes. Do you want to say anything? Okay, I just want to say, Chris, congratulations. I know you're going to be great over there, and I can't wait to see how all of you do.
Any other comments?
No.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Callie.
Branson?
Yes.
Earp?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Uphall?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Ryder?
Yes. Congratulations. Chris, would you like to share?
You could skip that part. So I will try without being too emotional, you know, there's been a lot of great leaders that helped me get here, one of them over there that this comes from. So just, I'm really grateful for the opportunity and just want to thank all of you guys for the trust that you're putting in me to leave that building, so thank you.
Great, congratulations again. All right, item seven, on the agenda, reports and recommendations of other district personnel, Mr. Arnold, who is going to present the most recent Illinois School Report Card. Arnold?
Yes. Some more celebratory conversations here, and just want to thank the Board for the opportunity to, to share some of those celebrations this year. If you'll recall, last month, we, we knew some of the, some of the results from the school report card, but because we, we were, were under kind of a lock, lock and key with the state, we were going to share some of those with you this evening, and so first want to just kind of talk a little bit about, about our why. Whether you're that little guy up there in the left-hand corner, just signing on to attend Riddle Elementary School as a, as a kindergartner, or whether you're that bigger little guy up in the right-hand corner who's celebrating walking across that stage with a diploma, this is, this is why we're here, both as, as Board and as administrators, teachers, and, and students and family. And so tonight, I wanted to just share a little bit with you, quick overview, we've got three sections of the presentation tonight. First off, we're going to talk a little more about who we serve and the, some of the specifics behind the faces that you see in the presentation. We're also going to talk about what the school report card is, as well as how did our students perform in 24-25. For those in the audience, if you, if you have questions, there's a QR code here, it's also going to be at the end of the presentation where you could submit questions or, or feedback for follow-up, but again, that will be at the end, there's a, there's a survey in there for you to be able to fill out if you so desire. Starting off with, with section one here, just basically talking about who, who we serve. So this section's really going to provide an overview of our students, and just kind of give you an idea of, of who we serve day in and day out in the 24-25 school year. So if you'll notice here, and I will try to, try to give you the best, best description is these, some of you may have to squint a little bit, but taking a look at enrollment, just under 3,000 students, starting off there on the left, and you'll notice that over the course of time, we see from 2018 till 2025, that enrollment trend there, state enrollment has, has seen some dips over the course of the previous eight to 10 years or so, and so we see some similar markings here, here in, in Mattoon. Cohorts are shown there on the side and, on the right side, and to just kind of give you an idea of how our district pans out from a, from an enrollment standpoint. So first of all, talking a little bit about this slide here will provide you with information with regards to students that we serve, who would be eligible for things like free reduced lunch, subsidized housing, families that might be in need of public aid or public assistance, these students would be, would be categorized into our low-income threshold, and if you kind of notice there on the left, we are at 62% as a district for the, for the 24-25 school year. That state average, the light green is the district, the dark green is the state. So as you can, as you can see, we are consistently and have been consistently above that state average over the course of time. While we have held steady, as you can see there on the right, since 2021, pretty steady there at that 60, 62 to 66% range there, but we do have considerably more students who would fall into this subgroup with the district. This slide here kind of gives you an opportunity to see that we also have a higher threshold for, for a percentage of students who would be considered homeless, and these are students who are determined to not have permanent or adequate housing or homes, could be families that are living with other families as well, too, but within that, we see that there is, with the state average, we obviously serve students in a demographic that is above that state, state number as well. Over to the right, and again, you have to squint really hard for that, sorry, that should have been as big as those cards that you guys receive, but it's not, but we have, have been above that state average here over the course of those last four years, as depicted on the screen there, too. From attendance slides, I'm going to start over on the left. Average daily attendance is at 92%. 92% student attendance, that's very much aligned with the state. If you will notice down there at the bottom left, we have seen it continue gradual incline, increase in our percentage of students, in our student attendance over the past four years. But we know that if students are going to be learning, we need them at school, right? And so one of our goals continues, as you remember from last month's presentation, our school improvement plans, absenteeism continues to be one of our four main goals and charges to improve, and I think you'll see here, the results are kind of showing that, that what we are doing is helping. In that center category there, for chronic absenteeism, and you'll see how this contributes to the school report card here in a couple of slides, chronic absenteeism is the percent of students who miss 10% of the school year regardless of what that reason is, and we are right there at that state average at 26%. What I would prefer you look at even more, though, is there at the bottom, again, you feel notice, we have seen chronic absenteeism continue to decline, meaning we have seen an increase in student, student presence at school, each year with some considerable increases there. If you go back to 2022, we've seen over, over a 10% increase, or sorry, decrease in student chronic absenteeism, and that will, that will come into play with, with our, our scoring here. Chronic truancy, little different than chronic absenteeism, but also extremely important, this is the percent of students who miss 5% of the school year without a valid excuse. And if you'll recognize there on that top, top right of the screen, our chronic truancy rate is at 15%, and we, we are considerably below the state average on our chronic truancy. This has been something we continue to tackle, each of the three of these, through our school improvement efforts, and this year is no different, as, as you heard last month, and you see a continued improvement in chronic truancy rates since 2021 there, some significant, some significant work being done on that within our schools, our, our teachers, our administrators, and our families working, working together to bring those numbers where we'd like to see them. We also serve a very diverse population when it comes to students with special needs. We do find ourselves with, with a rate of about 2.5% higher than the state average. I know this is really hard to see from where you're sitting, but that top chart over to the right, the light green is, is us, this, the state is the dark green, and so there's about 2.5% difference there for this year. Those students are kind of broken down, and you'll see this in the presentation, you have, you have, have shared with you, those students by disability, autism, developmental delay, emotional disability, each of them are kind of shown in there. In some places, we have a higher average than the state for identification of those students in those areas, in some places, we have a lower, but ultimately, overall, 2.5% more than the state average. The trends, you can kind of see in there as well, but specific learning disability in the top left, top right, are students that have speech or language impairment, and down there in the bottom left, intellectual disability, and then other health impairments in the bottom, bottom right, you can just see the comparisons that we, that we see with, with the state averages there. So as we kind of transition, I share the previous information to, for you to kind of keep in mind for the backgrounds of the students that we serve, and so we, as we serve our students, we want to keep the, those students at the forefront of our conversations, because they are the reason we do, do what we do. So with that being said, the school report card, in this section, you're going to kind of review some of the criteria as to what the state uses to evaluate performance, and review the overall state's rating system in each designation category as well, too. So as we kind of take a look at that, four K through eight, we have the, the breakdown there for you, and this, this breakdown, you're going to notice that student growth, if you squint really hard, or if you're close to the screen, student growth is going to account for 50% of that overall score, 25% in math growth, 25% in ELA growth. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we, we also have chronic absenteeism that counts for 20% of that overarching score down there in that, that, that yellow section. So ultimately, you've got 70% of, of your score that is determined by growth as well as student chronic absenteeism. I say this because there have been a lot of conversations about proficiency, and yes, proficiency is important, and we'll talk a little bit about proficiency, but from the state's grading standards and their weights, growth is what we really, really strive for. And so that is, we, we have students at all different levels, all different achievement, and they come to us, they come to us where they are at, and it is our job to see them grow in, in each of those areas. High school's a little bit different, and you're going to notice here that high school indicators have, have weights vary, growth is not yet an indicator of this. If you'll recall, we have the move from SAT to ACT, we expect to see some growth probably added to this, to these categories in the near future. But one thing that we do see from high school that we'll, we'll touch base on here a little bit, too, is the graduation rate makes up 50% of, of the overall score for our high schools as well, and so we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like for, for us. But obviously, still has proficiency weighed in, in English, math, and science, as well as, as well as chronic absenteeism, and, and on track for our freshmen as well, too. So report card designations, Mr. Schaefer giving a low high five there to one of our levelist learners. So we have five different categories, starting at exemplary all the way down to intensive. And exemplary is basically having overall performance in the top 10% of schools, no underperforming subgroups, and, and graduation rate's above 67%. From a commendable lens, you have no underperforming subgroups, and your high From a commendable lens, you have no underperforming subgroups, and your high school graduation rate, again, is higher than 67%. On down, you have targeted, where you may have a subgroup, one or more subgroups that are performing below the students in that group, and then lower on comprehensive and intensive as you go down. One thing that I will note here as we get to the actual results is that our schools work really hard on each of those weighted areas. Those are what help us determine where we need to see the most growth within our work that goes on within our schools. You'll often see that it very much aligns with what our school improvement goals are. It also aligns with what our action teams are doing that board members sit in on and those wildly important goals that we have that are established in order to see that improvement each year. So how did we do with this? I will give a little spoiler here and just share that we have seen commendable status for each of our four reportable schools as far as our designation for this year. If you didn't see the press release that came out earlier this month, that will start with the end here. And we are extremely proud of our students. We're proud of our teachers and staff, our support staff, our administrative teams, our families, for the work that they have put in to see our students show up and show off for the state to receive these commendable statuses for each of the four qualifying schools. And so thank you, teachers that are out here and administrators, for the work that you do day in and day out. I can tell you that there is not a day that goes by that they are not striving in one or more of these areas to seek growth and improvement. And so thank you for all that you do. With that being said, we'll kind of break down into each of the individual areas, and I'm not going to go through each of these. But for the high school, we are going to start off here. We've got, first of all, one of the things that we see here with the high school, some notable pieces. High school has a very high mobility rate compared to the state. Mobility rate is, that's something that when students move in, move out, you see sometimes a lapse in where they're at and sometimes can play a factor in student success. And so working with those students to ensure that we can pick up right where they left off is extremely important with that. Also, with our homeless rate, as we mentioned earlier, higher than the state, high school sees no difference with that. They're about a percent and a half higher than the state. Many of those areas, though, we fall right in line with where the state average is. With that being said, each school will receive an overall index score. You'll notice there, just underneath the flag, above the commendable title there, you see that weighted overall index score being provided for each of the buildings that we'll discuss here. And essentially, oops, sorry. Essentially, what that is, that index score is, your index score times your effective weight will give you that weighted index. Each of those colored categories down there will tell you how much that contributed to, in this case, the high school's overarching score. And so you will see a little difference between high school and the middle school and elementaries based on growth being a component in theirs. We already noted, chronic absenteeism is one of those targeted areas, and so those are areas of which we will continue to strive for. One piece here, you'll note, graduation rate, and I kind of accidentally went ahead and showed you a little bit of that, graduation rate received many of those point possibilities within that for the high school this year. Comparing it out, taking a look at the overall index score in comparison. So the high school would be right there at the 77.02. You'll see the thresholds on those dotted lines on both the left and the right, the left being targeted, the right being exemplary. And so you see the high school there on that higher end of the commendable designation there.
State data from all high schools.
Yes, all across the state, yes, all across the state. And so that gives you an idea kind of on a scale as to where our high school is achieving in comparison. When we look at comparison with just our high school from year to year, you see some considerable improvement there as well, too, with that 77.02 this year as compared to the 63.01 last year and 70.31 from 2022-23. Graduation rate, this is the one that I kind of made mention of earlier. We have seen nearly a 10% increase in graduation rate, rate from 23-24 to 24-25. In fact, if you'll notice there, I think, what, seven years? That's probably one of the top three overarching graduation rates that we've seen in the last seven years. And so the high schools were really hard to get those students to get across that stage to show proficiency in all the areas they need to earn that degree or that diploma. From a middle school standpoint, you'll notice from a middle school standpoint, some things that we see here, while mobility is not incredibly high, the middle school does have a low income snapshot there, 64.2% over the state average of 40.97. And so you see there's, they do have, you know, have a student population that falls into that category. Attendance is pretty well in line with the state as well as many of those other categories there as well. But chronic absenteeism is also an area that we continue to work with there. Middle school score right here is commendable, the 64.72 overall index. One thing to note out there, the middle school received all of their potential scoring for ELA proficiency for this past school year, as well as a perfect score on the climate survey that's given to staff and students. With comparisons there to the middle school with the rest of the state, you'll notice them right there, pretty close to, right in the middle, a little higher than the middle of targeted to exemplary. That score of the 64.72. We saw a little bit of a dip this year in their overall index score from last year, but very comparable to the 22-23 school year. Also, when we're looking at growth, growth is a little bit unique in that this year we see a little bit of an adjustment because the state had some cut score changes. And so as you look at growth there, you can kind of see each year the growth across the board. Math is at 57.54, staying pretty steady there. We took, as I mentioned, a little bit there, a little bit of a dip on the ELA growth side of things. Some of those factors that we see at Williams Elementary is that we see that Williams has really taken a jump towards curbing that chronic absenteeism, falling below the state average by about, what, 6-7% there. The low income, though, scores, you'll see 68.2 as compared to the 49.7 for the state, so still a higher number of students with low income status. Something we'd like to point out about Williams, they received all the ELA proficiency and math proficiency available, available points to award for those areas. Again, the areas that we still continue to work on there are within, a lot within that chronic absenteeism. Williams found themselves just south of the 72 score, 82 being that exemplary, so just 10 points away from exemplary status for this year. As they continue to work on those goals and continue to make improvements there, really they've fallen in line with most of the schools within the state, but on that top end of their designation. Again, the report card change for each year there, you'll see that weighted index has been kind of steady across the board there for them. And similar, I had to double check myself on this, ELA growth and math growth, both at 51.1, identical for this year. Riddle, as we hit the home stretch here, Riddle sees quite a bit of mobility as well compared to the state. They've also taken a good shot at the chronic absenteeism problem that we see, and by reducing that from the state average to 17% from the 25% at the state average as well, too. Notice there as well, too, they serve a very high population of low income students, over 20% higher than the state average. So our students here at Riddle found themselves with a commendable score of 79.03. They, too, received all their points for ELA proficiency. One thing we want to note here is the growth scores for ELA and math both, very good scores there with that perfect score with the climate survey component as well. Riddle found themselves just shy, three points shy of receiving exemplary status. They are excited about the opportunities that they have to try to make up that three points and already planning on ways to see those improvements. One thing that we will see that's kind of unique with this is, in a three-year trend, Riddle has gone from 58.36 to that 79.03. They were in just targeted status just a couple of years ago, and so they have made some significant gains in growth to be able to find themselves just three points away from that exemplary. So they are poised to continue to make those gains. And there you go, you see their growth on ELA and also math there, too, as well. Before I get to questions, there was one thing that I also wanted to make note of. Last year, with our goals for academics, we set, as a district, we set a goal for improvement to go from 39% meeting and exceeding in ELA in 23-24 to 46.3% in 24-25. What we had, we had a wig set at 50% as far as for growth, so we were just shy of that goal whenever we achieved the 46.3%. However, made significant gains in math. The goal was set just to move from 20% to 25% meeting and exceeding. And schools, our schools didn't just meet that goal, they actually exceeded that goal. They didn't hit 25%, it was at 35.8%, so they destroyed by 10% points. So very well done. I just can't say enough about what our students and staff and our administrative teams and support staff in our buildings do to kind of gather, work alongside families to help our students grow in all of those areas, whether it's academics, whether it's absenteeism, whether it's, you know, whatever area it is, we're constantly striving to improve on those. Any questions from the board?
Can you go back to the last slide?
I sure can.
That one?
Yes.
Where it's talking about the ELA growth and the math growth.
Yep.
50 is what everybody thinks, right? So that means we have, you know, almost 11 points higher than what average growth is.
Yes, absolutely. And in future years, when we get, when we, once these new cut scores continue to, we start getting data in on them year after year, those growth comparisons each year, we'll continue to see those change. But yes, 50 was the standard that they set this year for that. So yeah, see considerable growth there. Yes, thank you. And Cheryl, I know you pointed out at academic team meeting, too, about the importance of growth is so, so, so key. 50% of your score is reliant upon that. You know, proficiency is great, however, we love to see our students grow from wherever they come to us at. Other questions?
The chronic absenteeism, it's 10%. Yes, 10% of the school days, so 10% of the school days. So we have 176 student days, so 10% of that is that they missed 18 days, right?
For any reason.
For any reason. And so that includes excused absences. So teachers, the teachers in the room know how quickly those 18 days can add up, especially, I mean, every family goes through those seasons of sickness to, you know, hey, we've got a family emergency to attend the funeral or whatever. Those things start to add up pretty quickly. And I do have to say that, you know, and you see these results, this still continues to be an area for us, you know, coming out of the pandemic. I mean, looking at that number on the far hand, right, like 35 in 2021, like, that's embarrassing. And it's embarrassing not only for us as a school district, but I think for our community and our families, right? Like, we have to work together to continue to make sure that kids see the value in being in schools. And ultimately, what that means is it pays off in the sense that they achieve better scores, they understand, you know, things differently, and potentially they move into the workforce better prepared for life. So again, I think credit to all of our staff that have been working diligently to come up with strategies, but also the connections and the relationships that we make with families are so vitally important and likewise that families make with us.
I want to piggyback off of that. Being on committees, I see how hard you guys are working to get these students in class every day, and thank you so much for putting that effort in and getting them there because it is, scores show it.
Absolutely. Yes, Cheryl.
Those, I don't know what system it is that's on absenteeism.
Culture.
Culture. What's working that's good? I mean, what are we seeing? I mean, what's improving us 10% less in those areas?
So principals, feel free to share in this, but what I can say is that we've taken a concerted effort to pay attention to it, number one. That's not always been the case.
From day one, not until it's getting close to that 18 days.
Our teams are working with students and families who struggled with attendance last year, day one of school this year. That's a big piece of it. Our schools are also consistently working, they have attendance plans at each building. Each building's a little unique in that realm and what that looks like, but they are monitoring daily where students that are missing, students that are hitting those thresholds, and they are proactively providing supports to students and families that might be inching towards those thresholds. So those, I think we can continue to see this drop, but our work's not done. You know, it's still a large goal, and we've got some ideas that that team continues to work with, but it's just, it's really impressive to see the attendance, the average daily attendance increase and those other numbers decrease from the absenteeism side. It's pretty remarkable, and it's, it comes with a lot of stress and strain. It's a lot of work. Teachers are putting in a lot of work, our support staff are putting in a lot of work, administrative teams, secretaries. It is a lot of work, but it definitely shows in the numbers, the gains, for sure.
Well, and graduation, 10%.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
There's collaboration, I'm on a cultural committee, so you see the folks in different areas say, hey, this is really working for us, and the rest of them are like, hey, let's try this, you know? So it's a collaboration across the district, and I'm appreciative of that. I'm in the schools, I get a chance to get into the schools quite a bit, and I want to say thank you for what I see, because as much as, you know, administrators are putting these things in place and helping the folks out, you see the engagement, okay? I told Mike the other day, I was able to go to Williams, and I stood and talked to Mike for a second. He'll tell you, I said, hey, Mike, love to talk to you, but I want to go see the people in trenches. And so I'm going to thank the teachers for what they do as well. We talk a lot about plans and stuff, but the teachers, thank you.
Any other questions? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done.
All right. See, no further substantive business on the agenda. I will entertain a motion, do you wish?
Motion.
Motion from Ashley Overton, second from Cheryl Armstrong. Callie, would you please call it?
Will Earp?
Yes.
Pat Diggs?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Hey, I just want to make the board aware, I think we have movements, you know, so we'll be posting positions like R C football, R C volleyball, track, key lift, all those positions for the 26-27 school year, get posted this week, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you know anybody interested, please send that forward. We're excited to see what those candidates pulls up.
Board members, reminder, Callie, we're going to star president.
Board members, reminder, Callie, we're the star president. Number one, we're right here. Yep.
Congratulations.
I think it's called.